All members will come to the floor. We'll get to show on the road. All members report to the floor to your desk. Okay, we're going to have the morning roll call. All members present will please vote green to signify their presence in the chamber. Have all members voted themselves present? Have all members voted? If so, Mr. Clerk, you can lock the machines. Doorkeepers, will you please close the doors and keep them closed? As is our custom, we will begin our day with scripture reading and prayer by the chaplain, after which we will pledge allegiance to the flag of our country. Today, our chaplain this afternoon will be introduced by the lady from the 95th House District, Representative Darshaun Kendrick. Representative Kendrick.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and good afternoon, colleagues. Before I introduce my pastor, I wanted to acknowledge his guests that we have this morning on the floor of the House. We have Pastor Chris Etheridge and John Schultz from the church. And y'all pray for them because they're in charge of keeping me in line. So it's a pleasure to introduce my friend and my pastor, and last time I checked, my constituent, Pastor Lee May. Just saying. Lee May II is a former elected official in DeKalb County, where I was born and raised. He was first elected as Commissioner in 2006. He served in that role until he was appointed interim Chief Executive Officer of DeKalb County by Georgia Governor Nathan Deal in 2013. While he's pursued many different areas of passion in business and politics, Lee knew deep down that there was a draw to full-time ministry. So in 2017, Pastor Lee answered that call with his wife, Robin. Transform the Ministry is committed to helping people experience transformation in every area of their life. He enjoys spending time with his college sweetheart from Clark, Atlanta, Robin, and their three children, Ryan, Reagan, and Riley. And I will note that he is a member of one of the best fraternities, Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity, and his wife is a member of one of the best sororities, and my sorority, of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. So without further ado, Pastor Lee May.
Good morning. It is good to see you all here this, actually, this afternoon. I don't think I've been in the afternoon before, but again, it's such an honor and a privilege to be here with you on this afternoon as you begin to do the people's business. I definitely want to acknowledge my speaker, Speaker John Burns. Thank you for your leadership and thank you for your welcoming hand. I want to thank my state representative, and last I checked, you are my state representative as well, and I thank you for your leadership as well. And she's also one of the founders, one of the beginning. We started our church six years ago, and she was one of the first members to join our church. And I'll just let you know, she's a good member, an active member, a giving member. God bless America. Amen, amen, amen. And so it's good to be here as well, good to have some of our members from our church as well. I bring you greetings on behalf of our church, Transforming Faith Church. We are in Stonecrest, Georgia, used to be the Decatur area off of I-20 and Panola Road. And it's just good to be here. You know, about a little over six years ago, the Lord transitioned me. He gave me a promotion for that promotion. It's good to see so many familiar faces here today. They'll say this, "It's good to see your face, but I don't really miss you that much." Because it's good being. Do, I want to make sure that I acknowledge the fact that today is a special day. As Darshaun has mentioned, I'm a member of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, and today is the day that our fraternity was founded 117 years ago. 117 years ago, on the campus of Cornell University in Ithaca, New York. And I've been a member of that fraternity for 28 years. And it is really, if you know any Alphas or really any Greek organization, just thank them for the work that they do, because our platform is all about service, serving human. This morning, I want to just pull for your hearing a message out of Luke Chapter 10, starting in about verse 25, "We find Jesus." Now, I'm a Christian pastor. That is my faith perspective. I believe in Jesus, and I understand that everyone in this room, that may not be your faith perspective, and we honor that this morning. But I believe out of this passage of scripture, it can speak to all of us, right? And I believe it sparked in Him to make Him think that what I'm seeing and experiencing right now in life is not the end-all and be-all. He was thinking beyond His current situation and circumstances. So He asked Jesus, because He had been watching Jesus teach and preach and perform all of these miracles, "Jesus, what must I do to inherit eternal life?" And Jesus kind of, sometimes He wouldn't be just straightforward with responding to your question. He actually turned back around and asked Him a question and said, "Well, what does the law say?" This lawyer was a lawyer, I don't know how many lawyers we have in the room, but when they spoke about lawyers in the Bible, these were students of the law of Moses, the law of the Bible, the commandments as we understood it. So Jesus asked him, "What does the law say?" And the young lawyer says to him, "Well, it says to love God with all your heart, soul, and mind, and love your neighbor as yourself." And Jesus basically said, "Show you right. Good, you passed the test." And that's my own vernacular. But the lawyer, as lawyers do, typically want to be exact with your words, right? Because if you're not exact with your words, it can have some major consequences, both criminally and civilly as well, right? And so the lawyer asked him back, "Now, who is my neighbor? Like, let's be clear, who is my neighbor?" And Jesus begins what I believe is a special message for us this morning, declaring what we call the parable, Jerusalem down to Jericho. He must have lived in Jericho. And on His journey from Jerusalem to Jericho, He got carjacked. He got robbed. He was beaten. He was wounded. He was bleeding, and He was on the side of the road. And Jesus continues to tell this story, that this priest saw Him and looked at His situation. And the priest walked to the other side of the road. The priests of that time would be our preacher of today. "So I saw a man hurting or a woman hurting, and I looked at Him, and I said, 'I'm too busy for that.' I went to the other side of the road." Then Jesus continues to tell the story that a Levite, a Levite would be the current-day church worker. These two gentlemen that are with me today, they would be considered a form of a Levite. They worked at our church. The Levites saw this man in need, and the Levite walked across the street again. Both the priests and the Levite were this Jewish man, Jewish, the other side of the street. But Jesus continues with the story and says, "The Samaritan," describes who that person is. "The Samaritan sees that man in need, looks at Him, and doesn't cross over to the other side of the street, but comes to that person in need." Jesus tells the story that He bandaged His wounds. He got Him up on His feet. He tended to His tangible, practical needs in that moment. Put Him on His horse and took Him to an inn and put Him up in the inn so that He could recover and heal from His wounds. This Samaritan decided to do what the priest and the Levite refused to do. Now, I could tell a story about how the religious people of the time ignored the real practical needs of this person. I could talk about that. I could talk about if you call yourself a person of faith, that you really need to not just talk the talk, but walk the walk. Can I get amen? Not just say you believe a certain thing, but actually walk out that in your life. What you say ought to be reflected in how you live, amen? All right, I'm turning this into a church right now. But what I really want to pull out of this passage of scripture is the fact that this Samaritan came to this person in need. The Samaritan represented not really the enemy of the Jewish people, but someone who was different than, was raised differently, believed in God, but believed and served God differently than the Jewish people did. It would be during this time, it would be rare for a Samaritan to engage and interact with a Jewish person. But the Samaritan threw all of the traditional norms out the window and just saw a person, body and blood and flesh, a life with children, and whatever that Jewish man's story was, and said, "I feel called to help this person in need." We're going to throw away the side, we're going to throw aside our differences and the things that separate us, but we're going to figure out how we can bring together common things that we can work on together. Now, I'm talking outside of the scripture now. I think I'm talking to you right now. But the difference is that you may bring to the table different districts, different people, different geographical realities, figuring out ways that you can come together in unity, in unison, supporting and working for the people. I know I shipped it real fast on you, because I was talking about the story of the good Samaritan, but now I'm talking about this body and what God wants for all of us, to set aside the traditional things that separate us, to set aside, I know I'm cursing at you right now, but to set aside the political norms that you come from, to set aside even some of the district differences that you may represent and say, "How can we come together today to serve all the people of this great state of Georgia?" To me, that's what the story of this good Samaritan is. It's about this man who was different, so different from this Jewish man in need, but he decided to throw away the differences and come together to work in unity. Now, I realize that because I've sat in similar seats that you all have, I understand that it is almost impossible to set aside some of those differences. I've been in some of the biggest political fights that the state has seen, and I'll tell you this, on this side of that reality, those fights never serve the people. Today, I'm calling on you to be bold in your convictions, because I'm looking at faces here this morning that said, "I have come under this gold dome to serve the people." To serve not a party, to serve the people, the needs of families and flesh and bone and blood, and to serve the needs of people, and sometimes serving the needs of people. Just praying, my prayer this morning is that we be bold, and by we, I mean you, that we be courageous, that you stand up and say, "Who is my neighbor?" I would actually encourage you to, by the end of this special session, find a brother or a sister that is as different from you as the night is from day, and sit down with them and figure out a way to tangibly put something forward that can benefit all of this state. And I believe if you do that, God will smile down upon you. And I believe you'll be okay politically as well. No one has ever regretted being bold and courageous. I know I haven't. So I will end this by just speaking a word of prayer over all of us this morning, and I want to thank you all, as you all stand, for your leadership. Thank you for saying yes to serving God's people and just showing up. That's half the battle. God, I am so grateful and thankful that you are God, that you've given us two basic commandments, God, that you say everything else rests upon this foundation, to love you and to love our neighbor. God, this morning, my prayer is that your people will stand forward in boldness and courage, God, to love you and show you how they love you by how they love their neighbor. And I thank you, God, that as they step forward and walk in boldness and courage, God, that you would cover them, protect them, keep them, keep their families, keep their districts, God. Would you bless this state of Georgia that you've allowed for us to live in and grow up in and be born in as well? Would you be with us during our time here? Would you be with each and every legislator from every district, God? Would you open up their eyes that they can see how they could show how much they love you by how they love their brothers and sisters on this floor? God, we love you, we honor you, and it's in the name of Jesus that I pray this prayer. Can we all say amen together? Amen, amen, amen. Would you all recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me as we face the flag? Let me also say one thing. My beautiful wife, Robin May, is watching this. Hey, baby.
I knew you were a smart man. Thank you for that encouragement, Brother Lee. Doorkeepers, you can unlock the doors. Members, you may join Brother Lee May in the South Annie Room to make his acquaintance Members, we do have a doctor of the day in the care room. The doctor there resides in Representative Doug Stoner's district, Dr. Joanne Zoo. Please take time to visit her and say hello and say thanks at the medical aid station today down on the second floor. Chairman Tarvin, Chairman Tarvin, the Chair of the Committee on Information and Audits is recognized.
Mr. Speaker.
Hold one second, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Speaker.
Chairman Tarvin, the Chair of the Committee on Information and Audits, reports that the Journal of the previous legislative day has been read and found to be correct. Is there any objection to dispense with the reading of the Journal? Chair, here's none. The reading of the Journal is dispensed with. Is, Mr. Clerk, will you read the resolution establishing the order of business for the day?
Representative Stotfield, the 104th moves the following establishes the order of business in the first part of the period unanimous and sets. Second reading of bills and resolutions reported standing committees, third reading and passage of uncontested local bills and resolutions, morning orders.
Is there any objection to the adoption of the resolution establishing the order of business for the day? Chair, here's none, and the resolution is adopted. I don't think we have any first readers today. Is that correct?
House Resolution 21 EX by Representative Jones of the 60th, resolution expressing support for children and foster care. Senate Bill 1 EX by Senator Eccles of the 49th, Kennedy of the 18th, Gooch of the 51st, Robertson of the 29th, Brass of the 28th, and others, a bill to provide for the composition and number of state senatorial districts. Senate Resolution 6 EX by Senator Hodges of the 3rd, Burns of the 23rd, Williams of the 25th, Hatchett of the 50th, Kennedy of the 18th, violence and domestic terrorism
Reports of standing committees, the clerk will read.
Reapportionment and redistricting submitted the following report. Mr. Speaker, your committee on reapportionment and redistrict consideration, the following bill of the Senate is instructed immediately to report the same back to the House with the following recommendation, Senate Bill 1 EX, do pass, respectfully submitted, Representative Rob Levert of the 123rd District, Chairman. Representative Beth Campbell, 135th District Chairman, the committee on intergovernmental coordination locals submitted the following report. Mr. Speaker, your committee on intergovernmental coordination locals had under its consideration the following bills of the Houses, instructed immediately to report the same back to the House, following recommendations, House Bill 2 EX, do pass by substitute, House Bill 3 EX, do pass, House Bill 4 EX, do pass, respectfully submitted, Representative Beth Campbell of the 135th District, Chairman.
Mr. Clerk, will you read the local calendar?
House Bill 2 EX by substitute by Representative Persinger of the 119th, Barrow County, House Bill 3 EX by Representative Stevens of the 164th, Chatham County, House Bill 4 EX by Representative Gilliard of the 162nd, City of Garden City.
Members, if you will take your seats, we do have a local calendar that was just read. Three issues on there. Are there any objections to the previous question being ordered on the local calendar? Chair, here's none, the previous question is ordered. Is there any objection to agreeing to the report of the committee, which was favorable to the passage of the bills? Chair, here's none, the report of the committee is agreed to. Shall these bills now pass? All those in favor of the passage of the bills on the local calendar will vote yes. All those opposed will vote no, and the clerk will unlock the machines. All members voted. All members voted. If so, the clerk will lock the machines on the passage of the bills on the local calendar. The eyes are, these bills having received the requisite constitutional majority are For what purpose does Chair Lady Camp rise? State your motion.
Request immediate transmission of the local calendar to the Senate.
Representative Camp moves of immediate transmission to the Senate of the local calendar. Is there objection? Here, here's none, it is so ordered.